So it's eight thirty and I am going to call to order the council meeting of June the tenth. We have an agenda that was pre-circulated. Are there any additions to the agenda? Councilor Phobes?
Could we do an update from the FCM that we just attended?
Okay, council committee reports nine point one. FCM report? Are there any other additions? Councilor Cunningham?
So just will that include all of us because I'd like to provide an update on?
That includes all of us, yeah.
Perfect, thank you for clarification.
We'll just do it. Councilor Christie?
If not, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. The council meeting minutes from their regular council meeting of May twenty seventh were pre-circulated. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, I would take a motion to approve as presented. Deputy Reeve McGee?
I'm moved that we approved the minutes of the May twenty fifth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of council as presented.
Okay, can we do the May twenty seventh minutes?
My apologies, I was reading off the screen and not off of my notes. That's okay.
We're gonna have a little fun, come on.
Yeah, of course. My bad.
No, no. All right. I guess I should apologize for giving you a bad time.
No, you didn't give me a bad time.
So we do now have a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty seventh as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you. All right, the first item in our agenda will be four point one, which is increased water volume request. And welcome, Mr. McKernan. And anytime you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Reeve, members of council. This morning I bring a RFD for increased water volume request. An application was received to increase this current volume flow rate of water at the location of southwest twenty eight, twenty nine, twenty five, west of the fourth, as per our policy fourteen dash fifteen. The property is currently connected to the Selkirk Water System. It already has an existing full-flow service of four imperial gallons at forty PSI. This request is to increase that to the potential maximum of eight imperial gallons per minute at forty PSI. The landowner did go through the water model application. We sent that off to the engineers and the engineers have returned the results of that water modeling. And it shows that that increase is able to be connected without dropping any of the pressures below our set of forty PSI at the locations around that area. So if you have any questions on that certain application, then I can definitely take them at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Phobes, please.
Could you just remind me how this works? I had a question and I said I would ask it so that you could, for public consumption, on how, why would someone need to increase their flow rate from four to eight? And how that whole system works, like the, why would they have to pay to do the flow rate, those type of things? Could you just give us a quick synopsis of how it works, please?
Okay, through the reef, sure, if I kind of understand the request there. So the reasons why someone may need increased flow is really kind of a personal thing. Maybe they have two houses that they're servicing off, one, you know, they're on the same title. So there's two houses, so they need that increased flow to fill up maybe a cistern a little quicker. Maybe they have animals or something along, like each reason is different kind of thing. But they don't feel the four imperial gallons is enough for them, for what they need. It goes through a water model because we do have limited capacity on our systems. So if we increase this, then we're eventually, essentially, we're installing a new service. So we're taking that amount of water out of our overall design of the system. So that's why it goes through the water model to see if it can be done and if there's any negative effects on people around them. In the beginning, when these systems were installed, they were designed for the services that they had. I had four imperial gallons per minute at the potential maximum. If there's high peak demand on those, that four imperial gallons can drop to two. Like it just all depends on the performance. So that's where, eight imperial gallons, yeah, you're getting that potential, but you may not always reach it. But we do restrict it because of the way that systems have been designed in the very beginning. And that's why there's restriction in there. I'm not sure of that.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Phobes, please.
Then a follow-up question, just because the report that WSP gave seemed limited. What happens if one or more people on that same line decided that they needed a flow rate of eight then as well? How does that work?
So through the reef, again, we'd have to go through the water model process and we'd see, so if they came, you know, at a later dates asking for it, maybe at that time, those pressures that those different nodes may drop, then they may not be eligible for it. I will make a note that on the water model application for increased flow, they do have to acknowledge and sign off that they've read that this can actually be revoked if it shows a negative impact later on in our, on our systems. So it is there, but essentially, if our systems show that they can handle it in real time, then we can revoke and reduce it back down to four imperial gallons per minute if needed, so.
So what you're saying is we guard the integrity of the entire system by that limitation that we have that allows us to provide service to everyone. And so when we increase water volume, as we are in this case, if we choose to do that, the condition is that only if we can provide, and we might have to take that back in the future.
Right, through the reef, yeah, that's right, yes. And it's just the design of the systems, from the size of the reservoir to the size of the pumps, to the size of the pipeline. We can only do so much, so if it starts to tax those avenues of our systems, then yeah, then we can roll it back to four imperial gallons per minute.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Christie?
Just curious, how many risers have we got at eight gallons a minute roughly? Very low percentage, I would guess.
Through the reef, I don't have the exact number, but yeah, probably under ten, I think.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Councilor Penner?
Just for my information, John, does it normally take about a year for water modeling to be done or not?
Through the reef, it, the water modeling usually, it's kind of seems to be in, in the last little while, they're taking a little bit longer. I don't know if it's a process they go through on the engineering side, but yeah, it's looking at about usually two, two, three months kind of thing. This one, the ones that we did just lately, took a little longer because the engineer needed to update their model, recalibrate their model. And so we had to provide a lot of information and stuff and get that recalibrated before they would do it. If they didn't, then they'd have disclaimer on there basically saying they don't stand behind it. So we had to go through that process before we can complete these models.
Okay, and I'm fine with that, I think that's great, they take your time to make sure, you know what I mean?
Okay, Councilor Cunningham?
So just for my clarification, so in the past, when we've done an increased flow rate, have we found that it affects any adjacent landlords? And if it does, what's the process then, is the adjacent flow tested to ensure that they're having adequate, or how does that process work?
Through the reef, we haven't, that I know of, ever had anybody complain that there's been issues with it. If someone ever does have a concern about their flow rate or their pressures and stuff, then we'll usually get a call from them and we'll go out and we'll actually, you know, do a little flow rate test on it and we'll also do a pressure check test, just to make sure we have it. I mean, our system with the pressure regulators we have in there, over time, they do start to, you know, not work efficiently. So we do find that someone might be getting, you know, eighty PSI or they might be getting twenty PSI depending on where it gets stuck. So we'll go out and replace them and we'll get their service back up to what needs to be done, so.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Councilor Phobes?
So I guess this question is more for council. If this becomes a regular thing where people are coming to ask for increases to their water, is there a way for us, like we did with aggregate, to, if you need to have it increased, then there is a cost associated besides the water modeling costs that's associated with it? Because I'm starting to think, I'm starting to see things from a perspective of more and more producers, the lack of water that they're going to have, are going to ask to be put onto these lines. So then that becomes taxing on the stuff, the infrastructure that we currently have within the, in the ground. So is there a way that we could look at, or has previous counties did a water modeling where you did an increase to the monthly charge for the producers that need it for their actual, not wholesale juice? So if you're doing it to grow your farm, your cattle, whatever that happens to be, do we know if other counties do that as well, sort of like what we do with our aggregate? Is there a, because water is a resource as well. So if we're looking at doing things?
Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'm moved that we approved the minutes of the May 25th, 2025 regular meeting of council as presented.
Okay, um, can we do the May 27th minutes?
My apologies, I was reading off the screen and not off of my notes. That's okay.
We're gonna have a little fun, come on.
Yeah, of course.
My bad.
No, no. All right. I guess I should apologize for giving you a bad time.
No, you didn't give me a bad time.
So we do now have a motion to approve the minutes from May 27th as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you. All right, the first item in our agenda will be 4.1, which is increased water volume request. And welcome, Mr. McKernan. And anytime you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning Reeve, members of council. This morning I bring a, bring an RFD for increased water volume request. An application was received to increase this current volume flow rate of water at the location of Southwest 28, 29, 25, west of the fourth, as per our policy 14-15. The property is currently connected to the Selkirk Water System. It already has an existing full flow service of four Imperial gallons at 40 PSI. This request is to increase that to the potential maximum of eight Imperial gallons per minute at 40 PSI. The landowner did go through the water model application. We sent that off to the engineers and the engineers have returned the results of that water modeling and it shows that that increase is, is able to be connected without dropping any of the pressures below our set of 40 PSI at, at the locations around that area. So if you have any questions on that certain application, then I can definitely take them at this time.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Phobes, please.
Could you just remind me how this works? I had a question and I said I would ask it so that you could, for public consumption, on how, why would someone need to increase their flow rate from four to eight? And how that whole system works like the, why would they have to pay to do the flow rate, those type of things? Could you just give us a, a quick synopsis of how it works, please?
Okay, through the reef, I, sure, if I kind of understand the request there. So the reasons why someone may need increased flow is really kind of a personal thing. Maybe they have two houses that they're servicing off, one, you know, they're on the same title. So there's two houses, so they need that increased flow to fill up maybe a cistern a little quicker. Maybe they have animals or something along, I like each, each reason is different kind of thing. But they don't feel the four Imperial gallons is enough for them, for what they need. It goes through a water model because we do have limited capacity on our systems. So if we increase this, then we're eventually, essentially we're installing a new service. So we're taking that amount of water out of our overall design of the system. So that's why it goes through the water model to see if it can be done and if there's any negative effects on people around them. In the beginning, when these systems were installed, they were designed for the services that they had. I had four Imperial gallons per minute at the potential maximum. If there's high peak demand on those, that four Imperial gallons can drop to two. Like it, it just all depends on the performance. So that's where, eight Imperial gallons, yeah, you're getting that potential, but you may not always reach it. But we do restrict it because of the way that systems have been designed in the very beginning. And that's why there's restriction in there. I'm not sure of that.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Phobes, please.
Then a follow-up question, just because the report that WSP gave seemed limited. What happens if one or more people on that same line decided that they needed a flow rate of eight then as well? Does, how does that work?
So through the reef, again, they, we'd have to go through the water model process and we'd see. So if they came, you know, at a later dates asking for it, maybe at that time those, those pressures that those different nodes may drop, then they may not be eligible for it. I will make a note that on the water model application for increased flow, they do have to acknowledge and sign off that they've read that this can actually be revoked if it shows a negative impact later on in our, on our systems. So it is there, but essentially if our systems show that they can handle it in real time, then we can revoke and reduce it back down to four Imperial gallons per minute if needed, so.
So what you're saying is we guard the integrity of the entire system by that limitation that we have that allows us to provide service to everyone. And so when we increase water volume, as we are in this case, if we choose to do that, the condition is that only if we can provide and we might have to take that back in the future.
Right, through the reef, yeah, that's right, yes. And, and it's just the design of the systems from the size of the reservoir to the size of the pumps, to the size of the pipeline. We can only do so much. So if it starts to tax those avenues of, of our systems, then yeah, then we can roll it back to four Imperial gallons per minute.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Christie.
Just curious, how many risers have we got at eight gallons a minute roughly? Very low percentage, I would guess.
Through the reef, I don't have the exact number, but yeah, probably under 10, I think. Thank you.
Counselor Penner.
Just for my information, John, does it normally take about a year for water modeling to be done or not?
Through the reef, it, the water modeling usually, it's kind of seems to be in, in the last little while, they're taking a little bit longer. I don't know if it's a process they go through on the engineering side. But yeah, it's looking at about usually two, two, three months kind of thing. This one, the ones that we did just lately took a little longer because the engineer needed to update their model, recalibrate their model. And so we had to provide a lot of information and stuff and get that recalibrated before they would do it. If they didn't, then they'd have disclaimer on there basically saying they don't stand behind it. So we had to go through that process before we can complete these models.
Okay, and I'm fine with that, I think that's great, they take your time to make sure, you know what I mean?
Okay, Counselor Cunningham.
So just for my clarification, so in the past, when we've done an increased flow rate, how, have we found that it affects any adjacent landlords? And if it does, what's the process then? Is the adjacent flow tested to ensure that they're having adequate, or how does that process work?
Through the reef, we haven't, that I know of, ever had anybody complain that there's been issues with it. If someone ever does have a concern about their flow rate or their pressures and stuff, then we'll usually get a call from them and we'll go out and we'll actually, you know, do a little flow rate test on it and we'll also do a pressure check test, just to make sure we have it. I mean, our system with the pressure regulators we have in there, over time, they do start to, you know, not work efficiently. So we do find that someone might be getting, you know, 80 PSI or they might be getting 20 PSI depending on where it gets stuck. So we'll go out and replace them and we'll get their service back up to what needs to be done, so.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Counselor Phobes.
So I guess this question is more for council. If this becomes a regular thing where people are coming to ask for increases to their water, is there a way for us, like we did with aggregate, to if you need to have it increased, then there is a cost associated besides the water modeling costs that's associated with it? Because I'm starting to think, I'm starting to see things from a perspective of more and more producers, the lack of water that they're going to have, are going to ask to be, be put onto these lines. So then that becomes taxing on the stuff, the infrastructure that we currently have within the, in the ground. So is there a way that we could look at, or has previous counties did a water modeling where you did an increase to the monthly charge for the producers that need it for their actual, not household use? So if you're doing it to grow your farm, your cattle, whatever that happens to be. Do we know if other counties do that as well, sort of like what we do with our aggregate? Is there a, because water is a resource as well. So if we're looking at doing things.
Mr. Hogan.
Through the chair, there's a mix out there. Is, so some municipalities will do a straight through. I would say the, the, the flat fee model is probably disappearing in, out there. More towards a consumption-based model. Some municipalities do have graduated systems where your first tier of water use by quantity is a certain amount and as you use more, the price goes up. So that is out there too. It's not something that to my knowledge the county has ever explored. But it is a model that some municipalities use, are direct rural comparators, but I don't know the answer to that.
Counselor Whitstock.
Not a question, not a comment, I guess it's just some information that I've garnered over the years. When we initially put in the water lines, every residence that was adjacent to a water line got a riser. Not all of those residences hooked up to that riser. But we did dedicate four gallons a minute to each and every one of those risers. So there is capacity in the line. But when we do the water modeling, when John, when engineers do the water modeling, they are already allocate four gallons a minute to each and every riser that's, whether it's active or inactive, it doesn't matter, they are, they are four gallons a minute. If there is additional capacity in the system and it doesn't affect people in that area, then we do have a policy that says you can get an additional four gallons a minute added to the four gallons a minute that's there. I do believe whatever it is, is 10,000 or 11,000 bucks plus water modeling to tie in that extra riser. So it's not like somebody's going to be shorted in the end. Nobody's going to be shorted in the end. We have water in the system and the whole system, when it was designed, actually counted every chicken, hog and cow, cattle, in the county. And that's how they determined the size of the water line coming in to the cap. Well, that's how they decided the size of Aqua Seven's line. So there was never, at any point in time, strictly limited to household use. It was limited to the amount of capacity that the county had to not only take care of its residents, but to take care of the animals that are within the county. But again, these lines that the county have put in, they were adjusted to make sure that everybody got four gallons a minute. Plus there was an additional amount put in for future use because there is a lot of acreages that have come into the county. Everybody's hooking, basically, I would say, everybody's hooking up to the risers. So the capacity is there. And it's a service, it's a service for our residents. It was never designed to be specific to just household use. But on the other hand, that is, I, what people choose to use the water for, I guess is up to them. If they're willing to pay for it, I'm good with it. So just a comment that I thought I should make.
Okay, so just maybe summarize a little bit. My understanding is basically that we have a system that's designed and is capable of providing the water that's being requested in this case. Based on comments from Counselor Whitstock, I would assume that means we have surplus capacity at this point. And that's what the mo, water modeling is telling us. The other side of the conversation around cost of water, we've had those conversations in the past and likely will in the future and have determined that water cost to allow us to be competitive and not necessarily discourage industry that might need water from coming here. So I don't know if there's other questions, Counselor Phobes, please.
Well, I guess I struggle a little bit with the thought that there are parts of this county that doesn't have water and we're increasing it to, for other people. So these are questions that I have received, is, is they don't have water out there, so what are we increasing? If we're increasing it to a home, I'm okay with that. But if we're increasing it to build somebody's business, they have issues with that. So that's the stuff I'm hearing on my end.
So I guess my only comment to that would be is that we have to acknowledge that we don't have water lines everywhere. We do have to acknowledge that many of our residents who are adjacent to a water line, who have a riser, have also chosen not to attach to that water. They paid for those risers. And I guess philosophically, the question becomes if we have an existing water line and we have surplus capacity in that water line, why would we not want to be getting value for that capacity? So if someone came along and wants water, whether it's for business or personal use and we have capacity, I'm not sure why we would say no. And, and I understand why the question's being asked, like where I live, there's a water line that ends not too far away from me. My closest neighbor that has water on the end of that line is about a mile from my place. Would I have loved to have had that water? Now, maybe yes, at the time, maybe not. And that water line was put in place long before I ever lived where I live now. So we've looked at installing additional water lines in the county and looked at the costs of doing that and that's extremely high. So we have capacity, we have existing water lines. In my mind, I say let's use it, but that's my own personal opinion, so. Other comments or questions? Counselor Cunningham, please.
Just one more for me for clarity. I have heard of an acreage owner in our county that was denied increase. So I guess I just want to go back and clarify. So it's, it's all based on availability and the ability of that line where that person would reside to have that increased, is that correct?
Yeah, so through the reef, that would, that'd be an individual basis and I'm not familiar with it. But depending on the size of pipe that's servicing that area, that sort of the, the amount of people that are within that area, that could all affect the pressures around them. And that would be the, probably the biggest reason why they would have been denied. But again, I don't, I'd have to familiarize myself with it.
And that's one of the reasons why we do water modeling, to determine whether the capacity is there or not, correct?
Through the reef, that's correct. It's, it's not a decision solely made by the county. We take our water modeling, we send it through the engineers, they model that through their program and then they, they bring forth the, the issues if there are any or no issues if there aren't, that kind of thing, so. And any suggestions to help get that increase there or that sort of thing, so. Or even, even a service if it's not possible. As we did in the past with that loop. If you remember, we constructed that loop, so we were able to connect those few acreages in that one time. So there, you know, so that was how, that's what the water models kind of help identify, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Whitstock, you had a question or a comment?
Just a comment. When the county did the county water lines, each and every residence was giving a riser. The county has also taken over a number of co-ops because of legalities of monitoring water. Some of those co-ops, they don't, well, the majority of those co-ops did not run risers to every residence. That was a voluntary thing. And now that we've taken over those water lines, we are not running additional lines to a residence because they missed out on the first, whoever lived there the first time didn't want it, now the person that's living there does want it. But I think that is the reason that some of these are being denied. It's not because of them being in the position of having a riser and being denied, it's because they never did have a riser. That's my understanding of it anyway.
Okay, thank you for that. So what's in front of us is a request that we allow this customer to have an increase to a maximum of 18 Imperial gallons. The water modeling has demonstrated that it is possible. And the decision that we need to make is whether we're willing to provide that or not. So other discussion or questions related to this situation? Counselor Phobes, please.
Policy 14-15 hasn't been reviewed since, well, six months overdue. When will we be able to see that come forward?
Mr. McKernan, go ahead.
So through the reef, that's actually on the agenda to be brought back here in, in this year, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion or questions? If not, I'd be looking for direction from council as to providing an answer on this request for a decision. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'm very content with the, the information given to us that this would be appropriate for council to accept the water model results as presented and approve the application for increased water flow to maximum of eight Imperial gallons per minute for the property located at Southwest 28, 29, 25, west of four. It aligns with all our policies as we have them.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion that we accept the water model results as presented and approve the application for increased water flow to a maximum of eight Imperial gallons per minute for the property located at Southwest 28, 29, 25, west of four. Thank you for that, Deputy Reeve. Are there any other comments or discussion to the motion to approve? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to assume that means you're ready for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. And thank you, Mr. McKernan. Appreciate you being here this morning. The next item on our agenda is 5.1.1, which is Bylaw 1918, redesignation from agriculture to local rural commercial. And welcome, Ms. Hay Morgan.
Good morning.
Good morning, and anytime you are ready.
Okay. This is the second and third reading by, or for Bylaw 1918. Nalini Ramden is the current owner of Southwest 29, 31, 24, Plan 9410761 Block 1 and has granted Alexander Cosmac the authority to apply to redesignate a portion of the land to local rural commercial. The subject land is southwest of the town of Three Hills, approximately 4.2 miles. And redesignating a portion of the land would allow, allow for the automated automobile parts and storage on the north portion of this property. Under the Municipal Government Act, applications of redesignation of land require a public hearing before the bylaw creating the new district can be adopted. The first reading of this proposed bylaw was given on April 8th, 2025. This is the mechanism for getting the application into the queue. All information and questions regarding the application were brought forward to the public hearing held on May 27th, 2025. As per the MGA, council must hear any persons or group or persons who claim to be affected by the proposed bylaw. Any landowner who feels they will be impacted by a proposed development, either positively or negatively, has the opportunity to come and speak about the matter directly at the public hearing. Affected parties could also submit their comments in writing. As council reviews the discussion, the content, discusses the content of the public hearing, it can approve, amend or defeat the proposed bylaw. The public hearing process is a legislated process. Participating in the public hearing is the legislative method to provide comments to council for consideration for applicants wanting to redesignate their lands. Once a public hearing is closed, no additional information should be considered in the decision-making process. Redesignations are about the proposed use. A redesignation establishes a land-use district and is not a development permit. The redesignation focuses on overall site suitability and not specific development conditions. The purpose of the local rural commercial district is to allow for commercial development in the rural part of the county. Motor vehicle servicing, repair and storage is a permitted use within the local rural commercial district, which will allow the applicant to store automobiles and parts on the premises. Nihue County's Bylaw 1808 defines motor vehicle servicing, repair and storage as a facility or area for the maintenance of motor vehicles and includes the supply and sale of fuels, oils, lubricants, tires and other parts and accessories and the storage and protection of vehicles, both indoors and in a secured and screened compound.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hay Morgan from council regarding this request for redesignation and second and third reading? Sure, Counselor Phobes, please.
I guess I just have one question around, will this building have fire safety measures put in place to? Because I, I think about our local fire departments and that they're volunteer and may not be able to get there in a timely manner if something should. Do they have fire suppression, I guess is where I'm going.
Ms. Hay Morgan.
So to clarify, they're not building a building. They're just storing the vehicles on the property that will be screened. And so this fire suppression would be seem, same as the local fire department arriving at the site.
But they, where are they storing, they're storing all the parts outside?
Oh, sorry, like the parts inside the vehicle or in the buildings? Yes, they're.
So do those buildings have fire mitigation if it does catch on fire to help keep it? Because I mean, there's farmland and stuff around it, I'd hate for them to catch on fire.
So building code would dictate that if they needed fire suppression?
Okay, thank you for that. Other questions? Counselor Cunningham, please.
So through the read to the CEO, I know part of the MGA says we do hold public hearings and we do ask for public input. So I guess just looking for clarity, how do the comments from the adjacent landowners affect our decision to approve or deny this bylaw change?
Mr. Hogan.
Through the chair, that's, that, the answer to that is really it's up to council as to what value, what validity, what merit you place in those comments. They, as they're taken in context in terms of how they relate to the land use bylaw, how they relate to our planning documents, there may or may not be levels of validity that you assign to, to those. There may be concerns that are brought up that you have ways of mitigating through the development process. So really, the public hearing is that at that time for the individuals to voice their concerns. It's up to council as to how you feel those concerns need to be addressed or even if they need to be addressed or if they're valid. If they are, then you have mechanisms through the development process, whether that's at different stages. Say the development permit is an example where you can place conditions on there. The, you know, really it's a roundabout way of saying it's up to council as to how much validity you put in there, balancing those comments with the right of the applicant to attempt to develop the, the land as they're, they're seeking.
So just again, I guess, just clarification. So my understanding is, is that if this redesignation takes place, the land becomes now local rural commercial. So all the permitted uses that are potentially possible in that designation would then apply to this redesignated piece of property.
That is correct.
The process that goes beyond what we're doing today would be specific to the individual development. And just help me understand that if we redesignate that, then the process would be there would be an application for a development permit? And at that time, conditions specific to this development would be placed?
That is correct, yes. After this, if they are approved, they would apply for a development permit, that would be a permitted use.
Okay, so when that development permit is applied for and/or conditions are placed on the applicant for that development permit, does not necessarily prevent some change going forward into the future?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you for the clarification on the permitted, I think you've heard me bang that drum more than once, but. So I just want to clarify, oh, sorry.
If we pull up the local rural, if we just pull that up, then you guys can see here.
Yeah, the information that's in our package, yep. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Cunningham.
So when I look at the landowner, or pardon me, I shouldn't say the landowner, it's the agent. I mean, they, they state their intent, but one thing that I always want to clarify is that's the intent at the time. He says he will be not using this for a storefront or retail location. But I would never want to base my decision on what that current plan is because once that land is redesignated, all those permitted uses become available to that applicant. So he might not plan on dismantling parts there right now, but in that permitted use, would he have the ability going forward? would he have the ability going forward to do that there and to potentially sell them there? Because when I look at this, it says, where is it? Talks about retail sales. So he would have the ability, to my understanding, to do retail sales at that location once this is now under this new designation.
Yeah, he would have to apply for another development permit, you are correct. I'd have to look at the definition of retail store, because I'm not sure retail store and retail sales are the same definition in the land use bylaw. So that would be the defined definition there.
Okay, so always in a redesignation, we have to be aware that there are permitted and discretionary uses that apply to that redesignation. That goes without saying. Once we choose to redesignate this particular piece of property, the permitted uses are there, the discretionary ones are there, but there's a process by which applications are forwarded for development within that now redesignated property. And every time the use changes going forward into the future, once they've permitted one thing and have applied for a development permit and they change the use, there's a secondary process for additional development permit. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Hazelton, you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm just going to add a little bit of clarification around the permitted uses, because I know that there is concern that they're automatic, and as soon as they walk in the door and put this on there, we have to say yes. We are still looking at many, many things. We're still going to look at traffic, we're still going to look at setbacks. Not all of these uses would be feasible on that property, even though they're permitted. They say that they're permitted uses in the local rural commercial, they still are bound by everything else in the land use bylaw. So if they can't meet setbacks, for example, or there might be other provincial legislation that they're required to meet for some of these uses, and if they can't meet that, they would not be successful in those uses. So, again, I just want to clarify that there still would be a significant process for some of these if they were to apply for that. And it might not just be our regulations, it could be somebody else.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Councilor Cunningham, please.
And so, for sure, where permitted uses still have to come into the county, I definitely for sure understand that. I do know, you know, looking back on our, when we did our training for this, it says, and I quote, "Permitted uses must be issued if they comply with the land use bylaw." So, and my understanding is if it's permitted, they don't have to come to MPC. So is that, that's a discretionary decision of the planning staff, would it be then?
No, so that is correct, as long as they comply with the land use bylaw. And that's the piece that some of these uses may not, on that parcel, be able to comply with the land use bylaw. They might require larger setbacks for a certain use, and this property is not that big. So, again, we are going to look at all those things. And yes, if they do comply with everything, we do have to approve it, but that doesn't mean there's not conditions attached to those. So, but there would be some that may not comply with everything in the land use bylaw, even though they're shown to be a permitted use.
It's always the, I guess, the difficulty in terms of a redesignation is what potentially might happen in the future. Certainly, the understanding is, is that although there is a list of permitted uses, and yes, although they don't come back to us necessarily or to Municipal Planning Commission, we have to rely on our planners and our documents to make sure that the use that's being suggested is suitable for the parcel in place. And I guess there's a degree of trust that we have there and a degree of confidence, and in my case, I have both that, so. However, I understand people who live in those neighborhoods are always concerned about a change in what's happening within that neighborhood, so. Are there other questions, discussion related to the request for second and third reading regarding this redesignation to local rural commercial? I'm not seeing any. So my next question would be is what would council like to do? The request is in front of us for second and third reading, and so I'm looking for direction from council. Councilor Penner?
I'd make the motion that council move second reading of proposed bylaw 1918 for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808 by rescinding, redesignating, sorry, four acres plus or minus on the portion of the southwest of 293124 west of four, plan 9410761, lot one, from agricultural district to rural, local rural commercial district.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Penner. So we do have a motion to give second reading to bylaw 1918 for the purpose of amending the land use bylaw 1808 and redesignate. Is there any further discussion to that motion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm just going to read the motion again, and then we'll go forward. The council moved second reading of proposed bylaw 1918 for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808 by redesignating four acres plus or minus on a portion of southwest 293124 west of four, plan 9410761, lot one, from agricultural district to local rural commercial district. No further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? And the motion is carried. So, Deputy Reeve McGee?
I'd like to move third and final reading to bylaw 1918 for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808 by redesignating four acres plus or minus on a portion of southwest 293124 west of four, plan 9410761, lot one, from agricultural district to local rural commercial district.
Okay, thank you for that, Deputy Reeve McGee. So the motion is now for third reading. Is there any discussion to that motion? I'm not seeing any, so the motion is, is that council move third and final reading to bylaw 1918 for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808 by redesignating four acres plus or minus on a portion of southwest 293124 west of four, plan 9410761, lot one, from agricultural district to local rural commercial district. No further discussion. I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? And that motion is carried. So thank you, Ms. Hazelton and Ms. Hay Morgan. Appreciate you being here this morning and providing us with the information. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Councilor Penner.
I just want to make a comment. I see some adjacent landowners are with us here today, and I want to remind all rate payers or whatever that bylaw is complaint-driven. So if there is something that is not being followed when we do these readings and when they've been approved, please, like I said, bylaw is complaint-driven, so please come forward.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Penner. All right. The next item in our agenda is 7.1, Seniors Outreach Community Buses. And this one says that you're taking it, Ms. Vanderkuul, so anytime you're ready.
Thank you, Reeve. Today I bring you a request from Seniors Outreach. The organization is offering advertising opportunities on their community buses. They operate two buses and one handy van that travel regularly throughout Neahill County. Advertisements purchased through this program will remain on a bus for three years. Neahill County last participated in this program in 2017. The cost to advertise on one bus is $3,000. This can be paid in a single payment of $3,000 or in three annual installments of $1,000 each. I'll just go over the council options. You can approve a donation of $3,000 to fund one bus advertisement with funds sourced from council contingency fund. The council contingency fund currently has $25,000 available and has not been utilized yet in 2025. The second option is that to approve a donation of $1,000 in 2025 with two additional payments of $1,000 in 2026 and 2027. The 2025 payment could be sourced from the grant program, while the 2026 and 2027 payments could be budgeted under transfers to individuals as we currently do for Starz Air Ambulance donations. Approve a donation. The third option is to approve a donation of $6,000 to fund advertisements on two buses. I spoke with Seniors Outreach yesterday, and the board agreed that if Neahill County does sponsor two vehicles, they will provide us free advertising for a third vehicle. They appreciate all of Neahill County's contributions to them, and they would provide us this deal. And this funding could come from council contingency fund. Fourth option would be to receive this request for information without taking further action at this time. So that concludes my report, and I would be happy to address any questions that you have.
Thank you for that, Ms. Vanderkuul. Are there any questions related to this request? I'm not seeing any, so does that mean that you have all the information that you need? And if that is also true, then I would be looking for a motion to determine what direction we would give administration as far as providing this funding for advertising or not. Deputy Reeve McGee?
I'd make my apologies. I actually do have a question. I just wanted to know if you're aware of how many communities these buses are utilized in? Most of the communities in Neahill County, or is it mostly Three Hills?
I think it's, she said that these buses run through regularly throughout Neahill County, so I took that as many towns and villages, but.
Yep, that's how I understood it too, but I just wanted to be sure there wasn't, that I was on the right track. Thank you.
Councilor Cunningham, please.
Just to clarify that, I used to be the administrator of Seniors Outreach, and so, for example, during Seniors Week, which was just, was that last week? Lots of utilization for all of the area, and certainly when they do like trips to Olles or to Rosebud or whatever, it's being utilized by not only Three Hills residents, but residents of, I mean, I don't want to say all of the county, but definitely a very diverse group, not just Three Hills.
Deputy Reeve McGee?
Therefore, I think we need to discuss the possibility of the two, both buses concept. I think it's important to have our logo on all the buses that they run. So, I'm open to hear discussion, or I can make a motion to start this discussion, which we would council, I'll make the motion.
Oh, wait a minute. Councilor, you had to call that first.
I'll make a comment before you make the motion.
Okay.
I think it's a valuable service, both for Seniors Outreach but for the community, because we can access that bus for private functions. I'm with favor, I'd really like to see it on all the buses. I would, I'd like to see a fifth option where we donate six, or fund $6,000, but $2,000 or whatever it works out to per year to spread it out, so that it'd be, you know, $2,000 over three years. It just wouldn't affect the budget quite as hard, and it would still give us the advertising we need.
So you're suggesting that we provide additional funding beyond their request?
Yeah, I would go to two buses.
Well, this is, Ms. Vanderkuul, please help us out. I understood that the $3,000 would give us advertising in both buses?
No, only one bus.
Okay.
Yes. $6,000 will give you advertising on two buses and actually for three buses, because they're giving us the third bus for free. Buy two, get one free.
So, I have a motion in mind that might help the process here.
Deputy Reeve McGee, please help us clarify what we're doing here.
So, I would like to make the motion that we approve a donation of $6,000 to be made over the three years at $2,000 per year, as.
Okay, so the motion is that we approve a total donation of $6,000 to be made in three one-year installments, so three installments over the next, right? Okay. And you want it to come from council contingency, or no? In this case, this year would be council. It is confusing. Okay.
So I guess really we should have just used number two option and changed that to $2,000. Sorry. You had a well-written motion there, I could have just read that and gone with that.
So we're going to go with council approve a 2,000 donation in 2025 and make two subsequent payments of $2,000 in 2026 and 2027.
That's exactly what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Vanderkuul, for having that for us to use. Okay, so, just so everybody knows and is understanding what we're doing now, it's a total of $6,000 made in three installments of $2,000, 2025, 2026, and 2027.
Just while they're making wordsmith, that's it, not designing. Can you remember, in 2027, was there just one bus at the time, or did they have a couple? For some reason, I thought there was only one, but.
There's been quite a few different changes. Like I know when I was there, there was one bus, and then they had a handy van, and yeah, so there's been, yeah, I'm not sure how it's happened exactly after I left, but they definitely have different modes of transportation over the years, for sure.
Okay, so the motion is going to be that council approve a 2,000 donation in 2025 and make two subsequent payments in, of $2,000 in '26 and '27? Do we need to identify where the funds are coming from? Well, I'm questioning whether we need to actually do that or not. Mr. Hogan, if you would, clarify, please.
Through the reef, it's good practice to indicate where the funds are coming from. In this case, we could just say with funds to come from the annual operating budget.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we now have a motion by Deputy Reeve McGee. Is there any discussion, questions with regard to the motion as it is in front of us right now? I'm not seeing any. So the motion now reads that council approve a $2,000 donation in 2025 and make two subsequent payments of 2,000 in 2026 and 2027 with funds to come from the annual operating budget. Now, when we approve that donation, do we need to identify who we're approving it to? There we go. Ms. Vanderkuul, you're always ahead of me. Okay. All right. Councilor Phillips, please.
I'm just always curious, if we haven't approved this 2,000 in the 2025 budget, how is the money sitting there? Where is it coming from for 2025, if we've already approved 2025's budget?
So my understanding from the RFD is it would come from council contingency?
That's not what this says.
Council, through the reef, council contingency is part of the approved operating budget, so it would.
So we have funds approved in that council contingency that would make the 2,000 this year, and then we would see it in the operating budget in '26 and '27?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any further clarification or discussion to the motion? Any further clarification or discussion to the motion? So the motion now reads that council approve a two thousand donation in two thousand and twenty five and make two subsequent payments of two thousand in two thousand and twenty six and two thousand and twenty seven to Seniors Outreach for advertising, advertisements on their buses with funds to come from the approved operating budget. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried unanimously. Okay, thank you and thank you, Ms. Vanderkuul. All right. What I'm gonna suggest is that we do our council and committee report related to the FCM conference and then we are going to take a break. So we're at nine point one in our agenda, council and committee reports related to FCM. And Councilor Phobes, I'm gonna give you a first kick at the cat because I think you requested that, so.
I did, yes. Well, I always like to, I would first like to start off by saying thank you to the public and everyone who supports this county with funding for us to be able to attend these outings. They're very informative, doesn't matter where we go. I love going to have conversations with people across the country about what goes on here in Alberta because a lot of times they're not always aware of stuff, including what we might get for public funding for our renewable resources that are being put on farmland here. We've had that conversation while we were in Ottawa. AI is a really big thing right now. I wasn't surprised to learn that AI hasn't been a five-minute thing. It has been around since the dawn of a first computer, so AI has been learning ever since and that the one we sat in, if we don't have policies written around AI, we need to do that. I brought back some brochures for Mr. Hogan from the one that Mr. Christie and I sat in on, so it was really good. I just, I walk away feeling like people there have heard the voice of the people that sit around this table in rural Alberta, so I am always appreciative when we get the chance to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else want to weigh in? Councilor Christie.
I was at that one presentation and AI was like nineteen fifty-three when it started. I'm going, seriously? The other part of that, sitting in the round, or the tables and talking to municipal members right across the country, everybody's talking about a trans-Canada energy corridor. I sat with three different tables with, with people from Quebec and they said, this should have happened twenty-five years ago. So the grassroots is on board, whether the provincial governments are. We're watching the news the last couple of days about BC and, and putting resistance on, where even they're backpedaling a little bit about, no, we're not worried about it happening, we're worried about funding and right of ways. So they're, they're, they're thinking about it for sure and it's something that needs to happen, so that was one of the observations I made, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments? Councilor Cunningham and then Deputy Reeve McGee.
Looking at each other, who's next? Ah, gosh, yeah, so kind of further what Councilor Phobes said, yeah, I just always appreciate the ability to, to attend these events and, and get the most out of it that I can. Follow up a little bit on what Councilor Phobes says, yeah, I, I was on a bus going on a trip and just so organic the way some conversations happen, but we, they started talking renewables with me and I'm like, okay, yeah, sure, let's have that discussion. So, yeah, very enlightening for someone from Ontario to learn that Minister Wilkinson had given thirty-two million dollars to a solar project in Neheal County. And actually, they looked it up on Google and were able to read about it. So again, I think that, you know, that information sharing and, and the reality when they say, well, there's no subsidies given and to actually have that narrative change for them was, is interesting. All the political keynotes were interesting. Yeah, we'll leave it at that. You know, again, like we, we say this all the time, whether it's our mayor, whatever we attend, the networking is amazing. Again, you know, end up sitting somewhere and talking with people from Grand Prairie and talking about their challenges and one thing I came home with was no matter if it's municipalities in Alberta, if it's across Canada, big or small, we're basically facing the same challenges, just, you know, there's different aspects to it, so quite interesting. I did attend a Women in Local Government Works her Up and Reception. Sometimes I find those a little difficult, especially with the theme of the, the convention was Stronger Together, and sometimes I find some of the programs actually divide, so I, yeah, anyhow, that's, yeah. I did do the study tour, it was called Exploring the Rideau River District. It, it was not quite as, I think, the bus anticipated, but anyhow, we, we made the best of it. But again, it was funny because in the narrative of it, one of the catchphrases, we're gonna talk about protecting, protecting communities from climate change, which never came up once during our tour, so it is interesting how the catchphrases get put out. We went to the village of Manitouk, which is one of twenty-six rural villages located within Ottawa, just over five thousand people, so that's, that's small to them, right? So we did go to the Rideau Valley Conservation Centre, which was very interesting and actually I'll share pictures with council after the building that they built. It, when I looked at it, I immediately thought of Horseshoe Canyon because their whole concept was to build something that just really blended in with the area and didn't take over the area, so it was, it was very interesting. I was very fortunate to be asked to have lunch with the MP Damian Kirk, which was an amazing experience and so we talked about lots of challenges that, that rural Alberta is facing. And he did, did invite me back the next day to watch his farewell speech, which was, was amazing and I think Deputy Reeve McGee was there as well. It was quite, quite moving to see that. He did have a few municipalities come to a meeting and we were a little surprised when we had a knock on the door and Mr. Pierre Poliev came in, so was able to have a little bit of a conversation with him and my conversation really was around, we need to have you out in Battle River Crowfoot. We want to see you here, we want you at parades, we want you at pancake breakfast, we want you to be here, so we will see. And again, we talked again about the policing issues, rural crime, cost of living, cost of infrastructure and so, yeah, so we'll, I will hope that we see him in the area soon. So, yeah, it was amazing, thank you.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
Thank you. Everyone have a cup of tea and I have a few things to share. I, I have to say that when they, the theme was Stronger Together, it was speaking to my heart. I think you all know that that's what I'm about, the more we work together, the better things are, whether it's around this table, within this building, or with our neighbors and all across Canada. And I think they did a great job of really bringing that home. I also really appreciated the, the higher level of rural issues that they did bring to the agenda, they clearly wanted to see that that was being addressed. I also really appreciated that when you come to the real rural issues, what we saw in most of those things is that whether you're on, in Ontario or, well, anywhere, we all have very similar issues. Some are unique to our provinces, but overall, the overarching issue is the same. And so uniting across Canada about how to care for our ag land, for example, is, is the same for everybody and I like that FCM is seeing that and addressing that. I also had the privilege of being at the Parliament Buildings. I was invited through our past chairperson for the Central Alberta Economic Development Partnership, so I was a kind of a tag along with another municipality that had a bigger emphasis to that and, but also was able to have a one-on-one conversation with that gentleman, James Carpenter, in order to just reinforce that we are here, we want to see the economy grow in Neheal County as well as be part of Central Alberta being part of it and he certainly is connected to some opportunities that I think might serve us. So that was a very worthwhile piece for the region, for me to be able to be part of and I was very appreciative of that. I also just loved the opportunity to be proud to be Canadian and that was very clearly done throughout that. When it comes to together, working together, support Stronger Together and the Women's Workshop I was also at, I was at Empowering Women in Local Government Panel, that was a breakout session where we had women from other countries in Africa that spoke about their struggles to be able to even to have the right to be there and that FCM has been key to being there and helping mentor and they have a great mentoring program for that and I was very proud to hear that. In all honesty, I have always struggled with how to deal with the, the women in politics support programs because again, I also am very sensitive to the fact that I don't want it to be what divides us or brings emphasis where there is division and that certainly, so in all honesty, I have avoided those types of programs pretty well most all of my time here as a councillor and felt a little bit sad about that by the time I was done that workshop because if we're not there to support the people who don't have it as well as we have it around the table, it's one thing to be so fortunate to have such a minor issue around sexual biases in our communities, but that isn't the case across Canada, that is not the case across the world. And I think the only way that that will become stronger in all those areas is if we do stick, stick around and be part of what builds those women up. They were so appreciative to have the room full of people who were caring about them being able to withstand what they're going through. Nitrosities, we don't even, words I can't even bring to the public of what they have been submitted to, I, it's just unfortunate. And I'm saying also Canadian women are still experiencing those things. Eight hundred Canadian women, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the timeframe, I want to say in the last four years, did not complete their current term because of the sexual harassment stressors. That is too many for this great nation to have that kind of problem and so because I want Canada to be stronger together, I will now be attending more of those supporting women who, because there are women who are experiencing great struggles. In that though, I also want to speak about how extremely appreciative I am to be here at Neheal County. We have many fine individuals here who have the, that I've had the opportunity to work with in many capacities, both regionally, professionally, and most importantly to me, you here in this room. Councilor Christie, Councilor Whitstock, Reeve King, it is thrilled to know that I could not relate to those women's and their stories and I thank you for that. And though we do sometimes have various little things where we have to learn how to get along with each other, you always have clearly had the leadership that's Stronger Together and you will be committed to doing that. Councilor Penner, Councilor Phobes, Councilor Cunningham, you too, have given me the support to be just that. And I really think we need to be very proud and confident of who we are as a group as we continue to elevate Stronger Together, right? That's about respect and I am very proud to be here where also we have an administration who insists on having that same respect within his organization and I see it through all the staff and it just gave me a very truly heartfelt appreciation day and so that was my main point of my report today.
Thank you for that. Councilor Whitstock, did you want to add anything?
I think it'd be pretty much impossible after that. I guess what I've noticed, I've been to a few FCMs over, over the years, but I have noticed at this FCM that rural was being more inclu- I don't, I don't know if it's more inclusive, but it was less un-inclusive because they do see the value in rural Canada. And I know when you get into these meetings, there's a lot of people there that are urban, a lot of people there that are, say they're rural, but they really are urban, but we, there is mu- much more of a feeling of inclusiveness as to the issues of the actual, what we would call rural here in Alberta. So I think they've got the message, whether they'll continue, I don't know, but they are headed in the right direction from what I could tell. And it was great to do all the networking because it's amazing what you can learn from even people that you don't want to learn from. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you for that. So I guess I'll weigh in last. For me, it's very similar stories to the rest of everyone here. It's funny how in municipal government, the issues that we deal with on a day-to-day basis are so consistent throughout. So I actually toured the water treatment facility in Ottawa. They process two hundred and seventy million liters of water a day, so two hundred and seventy thousand cubes. The leakage in their system is about twenty percent over the period of a year, so they have the same redundancies have to be built into their system as we do, they have ability to push water from different ends and different places and cover off where they have leaks and problems and so they're much bigger than us and they're processing way more water than we are and yet they deal with the same issues. It's just a bigger problem for them. And they have equipment that goes way, way back in history, like you go into some of those buildings and you look at that big pump sitting there and it's like fifty years old. The motor might not be, but the pump is and they just keep refurbishing and keeping her working, so. The other thing that was very interesting to me is consistently throughout the cover, conference in talking with people from other municipalities that are small, the difficulty that they have in accessing all these big programs that the federal government comes out and trumpets loudly and says, there's billions of dollars available, but you better be big enough because if you're small, you don't get access. And no matter who you talk to, it's just over and over and over and over again, the programs are amazing, the Green Municipal Fund and all that stuff that they talk about and yet access to that funding is extremely difficult. So Counselor McGee was referring to the situation where sometimes we have small disagreements or misunderstandings and how we have to work them through. We had one during the banquet itself and it was around opportunities for people, but once you start and get engaged in that conversation, you find out you're coming at it from the same place, you're just using different words. And so it was very interesting. We are stronger together and as a result, we came up with an idea which we are gonna move forward, going forward into the future. So it's, to me, it's just interesting, you get in conversations and it's amazing how you can learn from each other. And I met a gentleman from my former almost hometown Dawson City and so it was quite interesting to go back in history. I mean, I started out in Dawson City in nineteen fifty-five and was a product of long cold winters in the Arctic, so it was nice to meet that gentleman, so it was interesting. All right, any other comments on FCM? If not, I would entertain a motion to receive the council and committee reports as presented. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I just have one other comment too. I just want to appreciate the staff who did all the work to organize this great event. We had a smooth sailing throughout the whole time and that is because we're well cared for here and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And therefore, it brings me to that I move that council sec- for information, the council and committee report as presented.
Thank you for that. So if there's no further discussion, the motion is we accept for information as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously and one more comment?
Sorry, just quickly, I just, I had mentioned it to her personally and just when Deputy Reeve McGee said that, I just also want to give a shout out to Ms. Vanderkuul for all the work that she does. I was standing at registration, listening to other municipalities be so. be so frustrated because they didn't have their QR code and this and that. And I'm just standing there going, I'm good because she's got it all taken care of. So yes, just to reiterate what Deputy Reeve said, thank you so much for everything you do for us. It was smooth, 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 wonderful. Thank you.
Good reminder. All right, we have a motion, all those in favor? And that motion is carried unanimously. It is now 9:42, and we are in recess till 10:00. We have a delegation coming at 10:00 AM. So we are in recess, and we will be back at 10:00. Okay, it's 10:01 AM, and so I am going to call our meeting back to order. We have a delegation this morning, Regional Business Support Network. And Ms. We have a delegation this morning, Regional Business Support Network and Ms. Michelle McFadden. So, welcome here. Before you do your presentation, I will get council and administration to introduce themselves. I see you brought backup in the form of Ms. Brandt behind you there. But I'll start with Counselor Cunningham and if you would please.
Good morning, thanks for coming. Laura Lee Michelle Cunningham, Division Five. Your face is very familiar to me, so I'm thinking our paths have crossed at some point.
Morning, Michelle. Jerry Whitstock, Division Three, Acton, London area.
Good morning, Debbie Penna. I'm down the Swallow area, Division Two.
And I'm Ken King. I'm the counselor for Division Seven, which is the northeast part of Neill County.
Good morning, welcome. I'm Division One, so I like to say I'm number one. And I also represent Central Alberta Economic Development, so it's really exciting to hear you.
Good morning, Carrie Forbes, Division Four, so Torrington area, South.
So Wade Christie, I'm Division Six, so I'm in the northwest corner.
Go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Morning, Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
Good morning.
Carolyn Vandercoel, Legislative Services Manager. Good morning.
Good morning, Kevin Gannon, Director of Community Services. Welcome.
Hey, good morning. It's Mike, Senior Director of Infrastructure.
And good morning, Teresa Cocker, Director of Corporate Services. Nice to see you.
So, Michelle, anytime you're ready, if you want, just give us a little of your background and then make your presentation. Can I ask you to use your microphone? We're live streaming.
How about that?
There you go.
There we go. Everyone needs a mute button when it comes to Michelle.
I'll keep that in mind.
Right. Good morning, Reeven Council. Thank you so much for allowing me to chat with you today. My name, as you said, is Michelle McFadden. I am a representative of the Regional Business Support Network. I'm a Certified Management Consultant and award-winning business coach. I have been consulting, advising, supporting businesses for the past thirteen years. Through multiple capacities, municipal, provincial, and private. The Regional Business Support Network actually began June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. So we're almost at our one-year anniversary in the region. It is a collaboration, and this is totally about the supporting businesses through the power of collaboration. This was the brainchild of Community Futures Central Alberta and the Town of Olds, Invest Olds. They met over coffee one day and said, how can we really support businesses in their business? Rather than the business having to go to Edmonton or Calgary or Red Deer, to actually have somebody local supporting local. And so they collaborated to write a grant to Prairies Economic Development Canada, who basically said, yes, let's run this program for a two-year contract and see how it does. So I'm very happy to say that we have exceeded all our KPIs. And the uptake from regional businesses has been fantastic, very, very welcoming, including businesses in Neill County. The region that I serve in collaboration with Community Futures Wild Rose as well. Chantelle's been a wonderful supporter of sharing client information and referring clients to us for business planning and strategic planning support. We have worked together to serve businesses in Red Deer County, Mountain View County, Neill County, the town of Penhold, the town of Innisfail, the town of Olds, the town of Sundry and Cremona. So the region itself extends from basically Red Deer South to Carstairs, east to Cremona-Sundry. And, sorry, that was west.
I do that all the time.
Wrong direction, wrong direction. I'm Australian, so everything's backwards. And then Troschu Three Hills in this area as well. So I'm just moving forward in our presentation here. So the Regional Business Support Network is not just the Michelle McFadden Show. I have a collaborator. So I am the Business Development Advisor. My role is to help with business planning, marketing strategies, learning new AI tools for productivity, workforce development, human resource support. In my role as the Business Development Advisor, we also have Anne, who's up on the screen here. She's our digital service specialist. Now, there are a lot of business advisory services offered through multiple organizations across Alberta. But what makes RBSN different is really Anne is the golden nugget. She actually is an amazing videographer, a digital marketing storyteller. And through the grant, we're able to engage her to go into businesses to tell their story. And we actually offer a free promotional package at no cost to the business owner. We will go in, work with the business owner to help tell their story in a video package. That video package is worth six thousand dollars if someone were to engage a professional videographer and storyteller to do that. And so when people are looking for grants for business, hi, we're Michelle and Anne. And that's been a really big uptake because people are very excited. The business owner actually gets to keep that video promotional package for themselves, use it on their own social media. We teach them how, add it to their website, build a YouTube channel with it. So we engage them and get more eyes on their business and hopefully increase their sales and stability over time. So the mission really is to empower businesses with resources, strategies, and tools for success, whether it be advisory services or that free promotional package. Again, our services are not cookie cutter ever. We meet the business owner where they're at. Whether it be they're starting up or they have an idea of a business and don't know where to get started, or whether they've been in business for twenty, thirty years and the kids don't want the farm, or they're not interested in having a legacy business, then we look at succession planning. We look at exit navigating for them. And anywhere in between, from startup to shutdown, we can walk in and say, okay, where are you at? How can we help? So that's led to many conversations around, I need to hire my first employee, or I need to let my first employee go. Or my marketing strategies that used to work no longer are, how do I get on the new bandwagon for digital and AI? Or assisting in accessing funding, financing through Community Futures Central Alberta and Community Futures Wild Rose. And also the opportunity to just have someone to walk in their business so they can talk about what's going on. And they don't have to drive. I go to them. We also developed a great workshop series called Biz Bites. I'm not too sure if you've heard of those. Monthly, we have what's called a Biz Byte episode. It's a twenty to thirty-minute online event where people can register at no cost to learn some great tools for business. We've had Grants 101, we've had How to Navigate AI, we've had credibility selling. We have an amazing workshop coming up with Teresa, who's teaching about workplace culture. So the collaborations, pulling all the communities together to make this happen for businesses in the region, it's coming together really well. We're really happy with the opportunity to do this. Some of the services that are already in place through the Regional Business Support Network were identified as necessities for business out of the most recent Brood survey that Neill County was a part of, where seven hundred businesses were surveyed to say, okay, what are your needs? And one of the projects that came out of it was a Business Resource Center. So here we are. That's exciting to have that opportunity to meet those needs right away. So why is RBSN a great partner for Neill County? Well, first of all, Wendy's wonderful to work with. You already know that. And offering local expertise right here for the people who are doing business right here. People who live in Edmonton and Calgary as advisors don't necessarily know what rural agribusiness or even a storefront in a small community operates. We do. We're here. We're in your backyard. And so not only that, I'm very, if, remember that show where it was, you know, ask a friend, call a friend, poll the audience? I'm definitely a call a friend type of girl, and that's why I believe in building networks. Because there's someone in my network that knows what my business needs. So for example, if I have a person struggling with, you know, some workplace culture issues, I'm calling Teresa. Because it's not just me as a consultant coming forward. It's the network coming forward, working together and knowing that, okay, what does a financial institution need to fund a business? Well, I'm calling Community Futures. What do we need to make this happen? And building that network of people that are working together so all boats rise. So supporting the region, these are just some of the businesses in the last year that we've helped get started. And you can see there's quite a few there. We're very proud of the engagement that's happened. And most of these are from around the region. Again, Olds is our hub, but we see we have businesses here from Penhold, from Olds, from Innisfail. It's been quite the amazing regional uptake. Some of the Neill County client testimonials, well, I had a lovely time visiting a great alpaca farm just down the road. I don't know if you've been to Joseph's Place. She is just an incredible individual. And really, I really enjoyed working with her. And by her testimonial, as you can read, she enjoyed working with us as well. We've also had some collaborations and work with Sweet Haven Barn. Wow, what a beautiful place if I was ever organizing another wedding. What a great place that is, a gem in this area of the world. And we were able to, within a couple of businesses, identify some gaps in their business, and they closed those gaps and ran with it. And it made immediate impact on their sales. So it was pretty exciting to see that happen. So who is in the network of RBSN, Community Futures, of course, Central Alberta, and Wild Rose, the Town of Olds, Invest Olds, and of course Prairies Economic Development Canada, Neill County, thank you very much, Penhold, the town of Sundry, Mountain View County, Innisfail, Olds and District Chamber, the Penhold Women in Business Networking Group, Innisfail Chamber, Sundry Chamber. And what we've also done when I first started is really what entrepreneurs are looking for. Bottom line is money. That's what they need to keep going, whether it be by operating capital, a term loan to buy more equipment, or support for the rainy days that come. So in my first couple of weeks, I actually spent a lot of time on the phone calling financial institutions, asking them to come have lunch with me. And we developed what's called the Access to Capital Team. So on a quarterly basis, the representatives of the financial institutions on the slide meet with me. We have a coffee two or three hours together and talk about, okay, what do we need to bring capital into the region and help entrepreneurs? What do they need? So they educate me on what they need so I can help my clients. Also, too, we refer back and forth because as wonderful as these financial institutions are, most of them don't even have the time to sit down and really hold somebody's hand while they write a business plan. Because it's an intensive process. And so they want someone coming to them with a business plan and having an idea of the content of it in the co-creation process. So that's where I come in. Someone walks into a bank and says, I need money to start a business. They say, where's your business plan? They say, I don't have one. They send them to me. And I coach them through, I don't write it for them, we write it together. So they have a full understanding of when they go back to that bank, they can defend the document. They know where every little penny on the financials comes from because they've done the research. So it's a great network to be a part of. And it was, like I said, built pretty quickly because we've only been around for a year. And one more year to go. So as far as referrals, I do track the value of the referrals that my clients access. So whether it be they're accessing a grant, or we've done a business plan together and they've been successful in getting that financing, or they have sought services of another business and say, you know, someone came in and said, I need a website. I did a referral, they did the deal, we captured that value. So the estimated value of referrals from June twenty twenty-four to March twenty twenty-five is two point nine million dollars coming out of this network working together. So you can see that there is capital influx coming in. So how do people get started? It's a simple phone call, it's a click on a website, it's a text message or an email saying, let's talk. And so all of the services to the business owners, again, I'm going to say, it's the good four-letter F-word. It's free. And it's no cost. So lots of value, grants subsidized. And like I explained, when people say, I'd like a grant for my business. In Alberta, because of the way businesses generally have a fifty percent failure rate in the first year, the government, which is my tax dollars, your tax dollars, do not actually hand out bags of cash to business owners with that fifty-fifty ratio. It's not a really great investment. However, they do offer grant subsidized services to support at no cost. So if you need to call a friend, we're here. So that's the Regional Business Support Network. I'm thrilled that Wendy and Neill County are a part of that network. And I'm excited to be able to serve more businesses in the county. Thanks for listening today. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much, Michelle. Very interesting and good information. I now know you exist. So I'll give council an opportunity to ask questions if they wish. Sure, Counselor Forbes, please.
It's not so much a question as it is a comment. I appreciate you coming in today because there are people that I can think of in the back of my head that could use your service. So once I'm done here today, I'll be making a few phone calls.
Thank you very much.
Because honestly, I think half of the problem is the public doesn't always know when things exist. So I do appreciate you coming in today for that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Christie.
Curiosity, do you work with non-for-profit societies like the Troschu Hall or facilities like that?
Great question. Through the chair, thank you so much for the question. Unfortunately, because there are so many other, excuse me, nonprofit supports offered in Alberta through the provincial government, that we want to make sure that we are not duplicating services. And sadly, the answer is no. We work for only for-profit businesses.
I work with a nonprofit hall, but I want it to be profitable.
I can absolutely understand that. And I'm not too sure if you're aware, and I can send more details as well. But the Alberta government just put together a fantastic dashboard of support for nonprofit organizations. And I can absolutely forward that link to Wendy to send it forward to you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I have looked into professional marketing and that kind of stuff, which is completely out of our price range.
It can be.
Counselor Cunningham.
So thanks for coming. And yeah, this is very interesting. I just popped on your website. So gonna definitely do some checking into that. So just to clarify, so you will deal with like urbans and the whole like area of Neill County?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's excellent.
I will say with a caveat. Because we serve, in the network, there are many players. And while we have Community Futures Wild Rose permission to serve in the area, we are only one or two people. And so we don't go into Drumheller or Strathmore yet. Right now, our borders are Three Hills, Torrington, and the outskirts of those areas as well.
No, that's excellent. I will definitely share your information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Deputy Rae McGee.
Yep. Thank you for being here. I had a vague understanding of your existence, and so now I feel much more confident in understanding it. I first learned about it actually at a different event, and two of the TV bank people were at the table and telling me about it. And I was so impressed to see their excitement to be part of this program. So that speaks volumes to the impact it can have, and we have banks being thrilled to be part of it. So thank you so much for your information and for the successes you've brought, including the data, it's gonna go a long way.
All right, well, I'm not seeing any others wishing to comment, but certainly, thank you. It's very informative and good information for us today. I now know you exist. I'm sure we are all sitting here as you're talking going, hmm, I should have this person talk to you. And I, I can think of, and so I'm sure we all have a list of individuals and businesses that potentially would benefit from what you're doing. And so yes, I appreciate you being here and informing us today.
Thank you, Reeve, I appreciate, well, thank you for allowing me to do that. And do please send me those lists. It's a lovely drive out here. And I hear there's a wonderful little coffee shop that I can stop at on the way home, so.
There's probably more than one if you, if you start searching for them. Anyway, certainly, we appreciate you being here today, and thank you for the information. And I trust you have a great rest of your day today.
Thank you so much. I will leave information with Wendy, as well, our brochures and my business cards for you as well.
Super, thank you very much. So the next item in our agenda, if we are going to continue forward, would be to do 8.1, which is just the disposition of delegation and public hearing business. And so I'm just looking for what I need to do with that. I think generally, we would just make a motion to acknowledge Michelle's presence here today in the Rural Business Support Network, and make a motion to receive for information the presentation that we just had. Do you know if Wendy wanted to add more?
Through the chair, I, I don't think so. I, I think that she felt that the presentation was, was quite strong and in-depth to provide information.
All right.
I do.
Does counsel want more information, because I can call her back.
Okay, so I tell you what, let's, what we're gonna do is we're, we'll jump to the follow-up action list, and we'll come back to this. So if you wanna just check with Wendy to see if there was additional stuff she wanted to bring, and then, then we can come back to it. That might be the better way to do it. So we're going to go to 10.0, Council Follow-Up Action List. And Mr. Zier, are you trying to hide over there? Like you can't see me, you won't ask questions? That's hilarious, oh, thank you. So are there questions regarding the Council Follow-Up Action List? If no one else is gonna jump in, I would just like a follow-up on the septic cleaning that happened in Huxley. If you could just let me know kind of a bit more information on how that went, and...
For sure, thank you, through the chair. So yeah, we did complete the, the first round of septic tank cleaning about two weeks ago here. I think they completed it within two days. I believe, I wanna say there was around 23 sites actually cleaned. We only had two that refused service, one that we weren't able to access the, the tank, it was bolted down, and two more were actually unoccupied sites. So of that, the rest of them were, were quite open and cooperative for us performing the service, so. Yeah, so as counsel saw, the, the fee for this has been added to the, the fee schedule there that'll start on a month, bi-monthly basis here now.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions on the follow-up action list? Counselor Cunningham?
So just wondering if we and the public could get a little bit of an update on 360 that council participate in the AUC process involving Lone Butte Solar, Solar Project. It's my understanding that it's in abeyance, but just wondering if we could get an update on that. And then I did notice that Neill County has submitted to the AUC for legal costs, so just wondering where that's sitting, and if we know a timeframe for when we may or may not receive costs back.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Gorman.
Through the chair, so the update, the update on the process itself is, I think, as you said, Counselor Cunningham, it's in abeyance. So there's not a lot going on, there, there's tidbits here and there. But for the most part, we were anticipating, I shouldn't say we were anticipating, the hearing was actually scheduled for around this time originally. Obviously, that's been pushed off, and we'll see what, we'll see what decisions or actions the proponents of the project take as we go there. We have made application to have, to have legal costs. I don't believe we have a timeframe when one will hear back on that. Of course, when we do, the, what we'll hear back on is whether A, they'll be awarded, and B, to what extent. So those are, those are unknowns. Council did approve $75,000 towards this, we're $42,000 into that. So that is, that is to date. And as I said, we'll, we won't know if we're have, getting any of that back until we hear, until we hear back from, from that request.
I'll just add a comment, my experience in, not with AUC, but with NRCC, no, Land Use and Properties Rights Tribunal, usually they don't make a ruling on costs awarded until the matter's no longer in front of them. So it could be a while before we hear anything back. Especially if the application's been put on hold, so. Any other questions? Counsel, Deputy Rae McGee.
I'm just interested to hear how the planning is going for our rate pair evenings. Is any special pieces that we could tell our people as we promote it? Or what to expect for supper sort of thing, or those kinds of details that help us promote it?
Oh, dear.
Go ahead, Ms. O'Gorman.
Sorry, through, through the chair, I think we've had that, the promotion for that has gone out. It's fairly standard, as it has been in, in past years. So I believe the first one is this Thursday in, in Huxley. Again, there's nothing, I don't, then I'll let Teresa weigh in if there's anything, but I don't believe there's anything that's really different from, you know, obviously, the information and stuff like that will have looked to update, but the event itself is, is on track.
Thank you.
And there was that email just recently with the updated storyboards that we, Ms. Anderson had sent out, so. Okay, any other questions? I only have one other comment, and that's for you, Mr. Zier. I appreciate the responses to the inquiries that I've had regarding road concerns and that they're being dealt with, so I appreciate that. And just the follow-up is greatly appreciated as well, thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, I would look for a motion to receive for information, the Council Follow-Up Action List. Counselor Christie.
So moved.
Okay, so we do have a motion to receive for information, the Council Follow-Up Action List. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Now, we're gonna go backwards in our agenda to 8.1, which is perfectly all right. And welcome you, Ms. Cabran. If you want to bring additional information with regard to the Rural Business Support Network. We're gonna just jump ahead and go on without you, but we're certainly happy to have you provide additional support.
Through the chair, I, I'm grateful that Michelle came in from RBSN. So I have no further recommendations, other than just to accept as information. I do believe what the work that they're doing is very well-received. Just to give an update, we will be working more of a greater push, particularly on those videos. It's a big absence, and that helps to actually really fill some of the void in our marketing as well. So as we build out that new website, that'll be great content to also include on our site, not just for the businesses. So we will be working forward with them on that as well. But no, I have no other further information to share on that.
Okay, thank you. And she did leave that information, left information with you, so.
That's correct. And we'll have all that available, we have a list of resources we're bringing to the rate pair events as well. So all of that will be on our table.
Oh, super, thank you. All right, Deputy Rae McGee, I know you had a comment, or...
So, so sorry.
No, it's no problem.
This is my passion, of course, and I just love that there's such opportunity to, to highlight the, the businesses specifically in our area. I'm also very excited to see the excitement we have amongst ourselves here as council to be part of this program. So I just wanted to put a little reminder in, we have an excellent economic development program that is looking to expand our data. So could I ask that, consider thinking about any one you contact UCC our department, so they're aware of that being out there, and they can have a better database of those, maybe some of those businesses you know hasn't reached our database, and it would be just really helpful if that could happen? That was just all I had to say, because I'm just so excited.
All right, thank you for that, Deputy Reeve. So then again, I guess what it comes down to is we are looking to receive for information, the information that was presented regarding the Rural Business Support Network. So I'd entertain a motion to that effect. Counselor Phobes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to receive for information, the presentation provided by the Rural Business Support Network. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor, that's carried unanimously, and thank you, Ms. Cabran. Appreciate one you sourcing that information and having it here for us, and thank you. You too. All right. The next item that I see on our agenda is a closed session item. So I would, it's intergovernmental relations under FOIP, section 21. And I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Counselor Phobes, thank you.
So moved.
So we have a motion to go into closed session under section 21, FOIP, intergovernmental relations. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you. Do we need?
You'll let me know in real time.
So we had a motion to return to open session at 12:15. We were in closed session for FOIP Section 21, Intergovernmental Relations. It's now 12:16. I'll call our meeting back to order. There are no motions that are going to come out of closed session. And the next order on our agenda is motion to adjourn. And so I'll make the motion to adjourn at 12:17 PM. We are adjourned.